To call the meeting of the Select Board for Monday, September 18th, 2023. Into executive session and returning no earlier than 6:00 PM. Could I have a motion to go into executive? Jeff?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I move that the Select Board move into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, or lease of value or value of real property if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, 62 Route 28, West Harwich.
Drucker.
All in favor? Roll call. Michael?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Five zero. The Select Board meeting for September 18th back into open session. We met in executive session and no action was taken. I'd ask that everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of our land, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. First, in regards to this past weekend, we all know that we had some cancellations of some fun things. I know Fred's here from the Cranberry Festival just in regards to the fireworks. I'll be back in front of all of you shortly with the new date we are proposing for the fireworks. We're going to add it to Christmas in Harwich, so that'll be forthcoming. But upcoming this Saturday, September 23rd, we have the first annual Law Enforcement Appreciation Day that Hingley's Home Center came to me and wanted to try and do so they could say thank you and our community could come out. So I left these flyers. I don't know where I'm supposed to hold this, but there we go. They're on the back table and it is 12:00 to 4:00 this Saturday.
Thanks, Cindy.
Hi, everybody. Ray Goward, these Harwich. I'm wearing my hat tonight, having taught Human Resources at Suffolk on the graduate level. And I know you've been kicking this around for a while and I spoke to a lot of you recently. And I think it's a consensus in this town that we need to hire a Human Resource Director. And I don't think it's a controversial subject. I think most people would agree to that. I have a list of towns on the Cape that have a Human Resource Director and unfortunately, besides Turo and Orleans, we're the only town that doesn't have one. And they all have Town Administrators, Assistant Town Administrators. So I'm here on behalf of a bunch of people to advocate for you to move forward that. You talked about it last year and, you know, it was back and forth who they should report to, talk to other Select Board members, see what works for them, but, you know, I encourage you to do that sooner than later. So hopefully that'll happen in May, if not sooner. Okay? So thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Can we have the list?
Yes. Can I have your pen?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Not something to be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Anyone else for public comment?
You're welcome.
My name is Fred Monday. I'm the President of the Harwich Cranberry Festival. It's been a long few days here. I'm glad everybody's safe and we really didn't get the brunt of the storm. It could have been pretty nasty. But in saying so, that the show must go on. Kath Kurtz, who's my show director, is here with me tonight along with my wife and they've been working many long hours to try to pull it together. Right now, we have a show date of October the 21st and the 22nd from 9:00 to 4:00. And right now, as of today, the count is 126 vendors and we have 10 nonprofits. We felt that as a committee that it would be safe to shut down Sunday and I would never have had enough time, even if we went ahead, because it takes so long to put that show together. So we decided to go with the second show and one of the main reasons is because it's a rain or shine event. So a lot of vendors, it was their last show of the year, and we felt by giving them another show that they could earn some of the monies back. So out of the 180 that we started with, we got 126 as of today, like I just mentioned, and counting. So hopefully we'll get it back up there. There'll be no food, excuse me, there will be food trucks and I'm working on that now. And then there'll be no beer tent, wine tent, and because it takes so long to put the music together that Mr. Weiser didn't have enough time to do it. So we'll wait till next year to put that together. But I want to thank, you know, a lot of people, but I don't want to take all night on you. But it took a lot to cancel everything and I want to thank Carolyn Carey and also Eric at the Community Center because they were able to put together for me on the same weekend, 21st and 22nd. Excuse me, to have Mr. Alan Hall come back and he's going to set up an exhibition in the gymnasium. And he's really excited this time because I was excited to hope to see cranberries. And he said, Fred, I'll have cranberries because they'll be harvested. So he'll have a lot of history there, the six generations that Mr. Hall has. Wonderful man. And we'll also have our raffle that we have put together as well, so I hope you all come out. I hope it's beautiful weather and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Fred. We appreciate all that you did and are continuing to do to make it happen.
Mark Kelleher, West Harwich. Speaking of cranberries, it's not often we're here to thank our federal government or the Office of the U.S. Trade Representative. But thanks to them, tariffs that India had preventing the importation of cranberries have been reduced to just about zero. India's the largest population in the world. It should really help our cranberry industry and our local cranberry growers quite a bit. Final thing is just a rest in peace to Norris Grendel. He drives by my house quite often on the way fishing at Wixon Pier. And what a son of Harwich. I didn't grow up in Harwich, but I feel like I did have to talk to him. So rest in peace, Norris. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, everyone. Bernadette Waystack, Harwich Cultural Council. I just wanted to come and use public comment as another of the ways we want to make sure we get out the word to everyone that the grant cycle for FY24 is now open and it doesn't close until October 17th at midnight. On the Cultural Council's page of the Harwich website, there's all the information links to the Mass Cultural Council. Everything is online. You can find a tutorial there on how to go about applying for a grant. You can find the direct link to do the grants. And we encourage anyone who has a project, a performance, any kind of an event that they think would be something that the community of Harwich would benefit from to consider putting a grant in for this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Bernadette. Anyone else? I have a couple. One is Jeff and my next office hours will be September 21st, 2:00 to 4:00 PM at 204 Sisson Road. And the other is just a reminder, we have a meeting September 27th at 2:00 at the Community Center. It's Bob Wilber. He's the Director of Conservation Services for the Commonwealth of Mass and he's talking about the intersection of conservation and affordable housing. They don't always have to be separate and competing. They can work together for the overall benefit of the town. So if anyone's interested, you do need to RSVP to Bob Spencer, 529@gmail.com. And I think, Joe, you had something?
I do and mercifully, it's quick and not a lot to it. But when the agenda was being developed, we put on there, as we have in years past, an opportunity to provide an update on the recent weather. I think you've already heard the impacts of it. So I will tell you that the only major damage that the town suffered was what we discovered on a clear blue summer day yesterday, that the power to the disposal area was knocked out from the wind on Saturday. Other than that, we did really well. If I could build off of the comments of Fred Monday in the group, I'd like to add to Fred's list, if I could, Lieutenant Adam Hutton of the Police Department, I know was instrumental. However, I also want to offer the town's thanks to Fred and his team. Couldn't imagine the feeling they went through, but knowing how seriously they took it, they were in touch with everybody from day one and right when we were making decisions to shut the town down, they were making decisions to do the safe thing on their end, but it couldn't have been easy. So truly, Fred, to you and your team, can't thank you enough and I know Lieutenant Hutton was part of your team and the decision maker. Thank you to everybody in your group. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Joe. No other public comments? I'll take the consent agenda. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we accept a gift donation for the town of Harwich, for the Harwich Town Band from Jane R. Chase Trust of $19.90 in the amount of $25.
Second.
I thought you were going to do both, but second.
And I move that we approve the Select Board meeting minutes for September 5th, 2023.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Joe?
Thank you.
Now we're on to old business and the first item is the joint meeting with the Golf Committee. If the Golf Committee wants to bring their chairs up here, you can, or you can stay where you are. But you'll need, if you're going to speak, to be near a microphone.
Madam Chair, can they call their meeting into order?
Yeah, there's a mic on the table. The black thing on the table is a microphone.
There's a microphone right on the table.
You want us up there?
Yeah.
And you'll need to call your meeting to order. You will need to call your meeting to order where it's a joint meeting.
At 6:11 and I would like to call the Golf Committee to order.
Great.
The agenda is in charge of the Golf Committee.
Great. Thank you. The only other thing, when each of you speaks, if you'd just be sure to get near one of the mics and state your name for the public. So I'm going to open this conversation. I'd like to thank the Golf Committee for your work. I know this hasn't been easy. I know this hasn't always been pleasant, but this has been part of the process we're doing for all of the town committees. We decided several months ago that we needed to really take a deep review of every committee, driven somewhat by charges being confusing, somewhat by having difficulty getting people to volunteer to be on committees, and probably some other reasons that I've forgotten. But our idea was to look at every committee, see, do we need them? Are they serving a purpose? And go from there. So thank you for your work and your patience as we go through the process. I'd also like to thank Roman Greer and Sean Fernandez for the excellence they have created at Cranberry Valley. It's known far and wide, I'm not a golfer, but I heard about it long before I moved here, that it was the jewel of golfers on Cape Cod. So I know in large part that is due to their expertise and dedication to the golf course. I'd like to thank Jeff for his diligence as our rookie. He took on the charge. He's done a thorough review. He's met with, I know he's met with you a couple of times. He's met with the staff. He's met with Joe Powers. He's met with Megan. He's talked at board meetings. And I think he's done a good job to develop the best possible solution for the town. His research found several documents which made it clear to me why there was so much confusion. If you go back to sometime in the 70s, the Golf Committee did run the golf course, so no wonder there's confusion. So on that note, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here tonight. I truly appreciate it and I know the Board does as well. As your liaison, I was charged with creating a draft. A draft that is not my draft. A draft that is a draft of multiple people that I have consulted with. Thank you, Madam Chair, for sending your version, the Golf Committee's version, to me. As Madam Chair mentioned, I spoke with Roman, our Director of Golf. I've spoken with our Superintendent. I've spoken with some other people. And they've all contributed to what you see in your packet tonight as being the charge. I can probably say that there's very little in there. That's my wording. It's a collaborative effort of the Golf Committee and the people that I've already mentioned. And then ultimately, now this draft is here and ultimately, the draft goes before the Select Board and the Select Board will deliberate in real time and then take a vote. And that's where we're going to land tonight. I would like to, if I may, Madam Chair, make three modifications because I, they're small, but I, you know, after reading a document over and over and over and over again, you think you have a finished product. If it's okay, I'd like to just...
Sure.
Okay. So that way, we all know what we're voting on. Under purpose, I may also add, Madam Chair, if I may, this is also part of the working template that we can also look at as the Select Board to determine whether or not this is how all charges should be put forward. So that's also potentially on the table tonight. Under the purpose, I'm going to suggest to the committee here, the Select Board, I'm sorry, that we strike the first sentence. The sentence reads, "The primary role of the Golf Committee is to act as a conduit between the Golf Department and the public." I move that we, I suggest that we remove that and the rest of it states, "Golf Committee is an advisory committee to the Select Board," and the rest of it will stay as it is. The second change I would like to make would be under Committee Members' Composition and Operation. It will, the line, "The Committee shall hold regular public meetings, a minimum of one per month, to inform the public on the health of Cranberry Valley." That'll stay. But then the change that I would propose would read, "The Director of Golf and the Golf Committee Chair will meet as needed and the agenda for future public meetings shall be created collaboratively. The agenda shall represent the requests of the Golf Department and the public. The Director of Golf shall be an invited guest to each meeting. However, attendance by the Director of Golf is not required. If the Director of Golf is not present, the town will provide an appropriate staff member." And then lastly, Madam Chair, under Scope and Procedure, on the second page, "To request information specific to the maintenance and operation of the golf course," and then I would add, suggest that we add, "That is not provided during the routine meetings of the Director of Golf and the Golf Committee Chair. The Golf Committee will create an agenda item for discussion at public meeting." Those are my three suggestions for changes. I can go into why I decided to make those suggestions if you'd like me to. If not, that's where the draft of the charge sits before the Select Board.
Okay. Anyone on the Select Board want to comment? Question? Don?
Let me first start by saying to Jeff directly, I really appreciate the effort he put into this. My concern, as it sits right now, I mean, everyone sitting here, depending on the length they've sat here, is listening to me talk about revolving funds forever. I particularly don't know how you can have in here that they can't actually discuss anything relating to finances at the same time as, let's see here, a little bit further up, it says that they're to look long, near and long-term capital plans and any future development that may impact the golf course. I'm not sure how anybody can do that that way. And if this is the template moving forward, I got to say that I see the road to waterways where the, it's possible the harbor could be discussed without the harbor master. It just seems to me that, I don't see how they could do their job this way. If they have to ask each individual time that there's something that might be sensitive. Personally, I plan on asking for more about the revolving funds myself. And to the extent that they're not provided to the committee, then I'm going to have to make sure that they're agendaed here to have that kind of discussion because I'm not certain about where the finances of the golf course are either. And I do know, Jeff and I have had this discussion, I do know that there's a probability that we have some funds left over and I'd love to know what, how much of that's set aside for capital plans, improvements in the future so that we don't actually do debt exclusions to the extent that we have money socked away somewhere. But there's at least a couple of things in here that contradict themselves and I don't know how, I don't know that I want to be involved in determining at this level, the stuff that could easily be done by a committee and we'd be brought back. And I don't think that it, the committee's heard me say this, I don't think it should be adversarial, for sure. And that's, that had been a problem. But again, I mean, the answer to this is if you want to wipe out committees that don't give them jurisdiction over stuff, we're going to have to pick that up ourselves. And we're going to have to go into more investigative stuff than I think any one of us has the time to do.
Can you just clarify for me, Don, because I didn't quite follow?
Well, they're not allowed...
What are you saying? They're not allowed...
First of all, the Director of Golf doesn't have to go to meetings. I'm not sure who an appropriate staff member would be. But I do know that the, if this is extended into every single charge that we have, I mean, this is not crazy either. If this were extended, the planning board could be without a planner because the planner just decides they don't want to go. The Waterways Committee doesn't have to have the harbor master there because he decides not to go. I don't know how workable this is.
Okay.
To the extent that they're directing him, Jeff and I are on the absolute same page, that they don't have any day-to-day supervisory responsibilities for any member of the golf course, any member. That goes to the Director, goes to, you know, to everyone below that. They don't supervise them, they don't work, those people don't work for the committee. I think they understand that. But I don't know how you can decide where to set fees, for instance, unless you know what the makeup of the finances are below the fees because that's their source of income.
May I respond to that?
You may.
Thank you. So I hear what you're saying. I respect everything you said and I actually understood most of it, right? So, no, and I'm not saying that sarcastically. I do mean that. I think we need to separate charge and template because I think there was a little bit of a mix there. And I understand where you're coming from and I don't want to diminish that. Part of the revision I made was to directly answer that point that you just made, which is to request information specific to the maintenance and operation of the golf course that is not provided during the routine meetings of the Director of Golf and the Golf Committee Chair. That's meant to say that the Golf Committee Chair during those routine meetings can ask for information and the Director of Golf will provide information to the Director, to the Committee Chair. But I can't cover all potential asks. So there has to be some kind of procedure for an ask that the Director of Golf isn't comfortably giving, comfortable giving. That is why the next sentence says, "The Golf Committee will create an agenda for an item for discussion at a public meeting." And then Madam Chair could bring that request to me and then that request can go to the Board. I don't want to be involved. I don't think the Board wants to be involved in a ton of work with the Golf Committee and the Director of Golf. But there has to be a way, a provision in there for what if the Director of Golf does not feel comfortable giving certain information? And that's all that, that's all that revision was trying to accomplish. I'm open to suggestions about a revision to the revision, but that was my intention is I would like the Committee Chair to be able to have a dialogue with the Director of Golf. But sooner or later, there's going to be a question that the Director of Golf doesn't feel comfortable answering or a request that they might not feel comfortable giving. So that's my answer to that point.
Jeff, I'm, Don, I mean, did you...
I'm Don. He's Jeff.
I kind of knew that.
He's slightly taller. Don't for a minute think that I was trying to have you on anything that you were saying is being sinister. I'm just pointing out that absent any names, it just seemed cumbersome. It just, you're asking them to do something that they don't necessarily have the tools to do. If you think that that revision allows them to continue to ask and if the Department Head doesn't want to supply that, he can go through you as a relief valve, then I'll take that face value because that's, that was language that I hadn't heard before.
Understood.
Julie or Michael?
I don't really have much to, I mean, I think, first of all, thank you, Jeff. You did a great job and I think it's helpful to have not only a template, but I think this clarification here, I'm anxious to hear what the committee has to say.
We will get to you, okay?
So I just, I guess I will hold my comments until I hear what the committee's thinking.
Michael?
One brief comment, then the Golf Committee and I'll respond with the rest of what I have to say.
Okay.
On the revolving funds, Don, eight years, shared frustration, three years, we've really tried to tack down on it with no change whatsoever. And I would only point out that we do get audited every year. And as much as I understand what some of your points are, we pass the audit successfully every year. We're spending the money appropriately. Jeff, thank you for the amount of time that you put into this and the amount of resources that you tap to come up with what you came up with. And as much as every sentence may not be spelled out exactly, revolving fund balances are public knowledge. We do have a Director of Golf. And before we get on to the larger debate about this, for the last two and a half to three years, there's been nothing but problems between the Golf Committee and the Superintendent of Golf and Sean Fernandez and who runs the golf course. Based on the charge and the charge is, as I said in our last meeting together, I understand this to me reads crystal clear. We have a Director of Golf who runs the Golf Committee, I mean, the golf course. We have a Golf Committee that the Board of Selectmen will use as advisory and a conduit between us and the public.
Now, we removed that.
What's that?
Jeff, remove that part.
Removing the, being a conduit between the public?
Yeah, that's not its purpose, according to the charter.
His first revision was to take that first line up.
So I'm going to let you finish.
Well, I just want to clarify that the point of the committee, and nothing's been voted yet, the point of the committee is to be conduit. Now, not necessarily on the financials, not necessarily on whether or not the town wants to, without direction from the Board, add a nine-hole golf course next to it. That comes from us to the Golf Director, who would then work with the Chair and establish an agenda item with what that Golf Committee should be doing and bringing forward, in my opinion. The, back to my original point, the revolving funds are the revolving funds and they are spent by the golf course. I would imagine Roman, with any big project, is going to tap the expertise of a committee to bring forward recommendations and do homework on such a large project.
If I may?
Jeff, do you want to clarify?
I do. So I removed it because it's in here. "The agenda shall represent the requests of the Golf Department and the public." So there's the public conduit, the Golf Director and the public.
That's it, that's it for now, Matt.
I'm not opposed to putting line one back in this document somewhere. That would be fine with me. I just felt that "The agenda shall represent the requests of the Golf Department and the public" makes it pretty clear that the agenda that the Golf Committee will be speaking about is partly the public's agenda.
So if I can just clarify, you took that first sentence out because it's embedded later in the...
It's embedded later.
It did strike me that it should open with that, the second sentence. It made more sense to define the, okay.
And to add to that, Madam Chair, that's how I see if this template gets approved, how all charges would start, essentially.
Line up with the same categories.
Line up with the same, right.
Okay.
But again, I have no problem putting that sentence back in here in another place somewhere.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Don?
Yeah, Jeff and I discussed that too, so I'll bring it out in the open here is that I would object to that because it's not its primary purpose. The way your charter reads, it's supposed to be... reads, it's supposed to be advisory to us. I mean, and that second sentence makes that clear, and in doing the advisory to us, part of it, they do have to talk to the public, they do have to talk to the operations people of the golf course and align everything, and if they've got any concerns, they bring those to us.
And the only other thing I had, which no one's brought up yet, but the required minimum of one per month, what if there was a month they didn't need to meet? Do we really want to require?
That's up for?
Yep. Maybe, maybe?
Real-time deliberation.
Maybe suggested monthly meeting, but if, you know, things are quiet and they can skip a month, we would do that if things were quiet.
We do that. So I, I, I put it in there, so that it was a placeholder for future, for discussion. And I'm, I'm willing to, in real-time, take committees' suggestions, as well as the board's.
Great, okay, I think?
So, so am I adding line one back in somewhere else, or are we not?
You have that, though.
We, okay, so then I'm, I'm striking that, great.
Okay. Martha, do you want to talk, or call on your members, however you, you go right ahead? Just, for the record, just say your name again, if you would.
I will.
And pull, pull the thing over, they don't pick up.
Martha Delphi, the chairwoman of the golf committee. And I want to thank you all for inviting us this evening, so that we can have direction and a vision for this committee. Focus of this meeting is reviewing the charge created by the liaison. First of all, I am very concerned how the charge was developed. The process outlined at the meeting and subsequent emails to me from the liaison was to be as follows. One, the liaison would meet with town employees. Second, the Howard Golf Committee would hold a work session to develop our charge. We voted on it and sent it to our liaison. Three, the liaison received our vote upon the charge and developed this document. The liaison was supposed to meet with me and blend the two charges together. This did not happen. Therefore, this document does not truly represent collaboration. The charge, as it is stated, does not permit the committee to operate in an efficient and effective manner. Specifically, my concerns are, number one, it is punitive. The makeup of the committee with four non-pass holders and three pass holders is a means to change the committee's current membership. Generally speaking, non-pass holders have very little interest in golf, and very little knowledge of golf operations. Having them as a majority of the representatives of the committee would be harmful to the adversary role of this committee. Not unlike the select board, where most of you stated that you knew very little of golf. A committee whose advisory role is for one of the town's biggest assets should have members who have a stake in that asset, knowledge of golf, and golf course operations, not just a financial stakeholder. Additionally, to the Town Charter, Chapter Seven, Article Three, titled "Change in Composition of Appointed Town Agencies," states the town meeting made by bylaw enlarged or decreased the number of persons to serve as members, voting members. The Charter does not specifically outline the makeup of demographics of an appointed town agency, as our charge intends to do. Does this charge change, require a vote at the annual town meeting to make it part of our charge? Number two, this is demeaning. As a conduit between the golf department and the public, how can you provide a place for the public to participate when the attendance of the director of golf is not required? Additionally, how can the committee interface with the director of golf if this person is not attending our meeting? What purpose does it serve to have the chair meet with the director of golf to collaboratively create an agenda to then have his attendance not required? Isn't the director of golf the liaison of the golf course to the public? And shouldn't there be an efficient way to have access to the director of golf? Our committee's purpose is to hold open meetings to provide this conduit for interaction between the public, golf committee, and the director of golf and invited guests. Three, it is contradictory. According to the new charge, as an advisory committee to the select board, making recommendations regarding governing policies relating to the maintenance and the operation of the municipal golf course, which may include, but not be limited, to near and long-term plans, rates and fees, passholding decisions, other major items of future developments that may impact the golf course. We have to request information by way of an agenda item, vote positively on it, and then bring the request to the select board? The process wants our access to timely information that impacts our advisory role. This was never the process in the past. We asked for information that was part of our agenda, and in most instances, we were provided that information by the director of golf. I can only think of one instance, when information on the restaurant was requested, and the director of golf went to his supervisor who replied that it's not in their purview. Additionally, this statement in the charge, the committee has no financial review or audit functions, contradicts the policies in area where we make recommendations to the select board, such as capital plans, rates of fees, other major items, and golf course developments, which all have financial implications to the golf course. These documents were always accessible to the committee through the director of golf, and served as an integral part of our role on the committee. As a committee appointed by the select board, our role has always been as advisors of the governing policies relating to the maintenance and operation of Cranberry Valley, in a liaison capacity with the public, an extension of the select board. Town committees serve an important purpose for the taxpayers, in a capacity that's not humanly possible for the select board to do. We are volunteers who care about the golf course, and the taxpayers who care about how our tax dollars are spent. In order for this change in charge to be a document that permits the Howard Golf Committee to operate in an efficient and effective manner, I ask that our liaison collaborate in a work session with the golf committee to rewrite a charge that gives us the ability to do our jobs. And there's one thing that I have got to state, and Michael, I have been on the golf committee for over nine years. I never wanted to be chair of this committee, but I was asked by my colleagues to take us through this transition, and it was a transition. But I will tell you, Michael, I've been to every golf committee, and I would like for you to review the minutes of the last nine years, and listen to the audience, and you will never hear one negative remark that was ever made to the director of golf or to our superintendent. If you walk Cranberry Valley and walk that course, we have the best superintendent we have, have in this whole Cape, and that's why it's our jewel. And that's why I am on this committee. And please note that this is a sacrifice for me. I worked 47 years as a head of school. I know how boards run, and I know what respect is and kindness, and that's something we have to experience right here, right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Did anyone else from the committee wish to speak? And there's no obligation. Yes, just identify yourself, please.
I'll go to the microphone.
Okay, why don't you?
This is fine. Paul White, 7 Littlefield Pond Road in Howard, and I do want to thank the board for inviting us to have an opportunity to participate. I always say, and I think when I was first interviewed by the board, I told them that if they chose me, I would be the affirmative action for the high handicappers. And if you saw my handicap, you would know, that is an absolute truth. But I love the course, and I love the experience of serving on the committee. And I think our chair has, has raised a number of very important points that we want you to consider. I'd like to focus a little bit on the makeup issue, because I do think you, as a, as a board, have, and the absolute right to decide whether you want a pass holder or a non-pass holder. And I think you can do that without putting it in, in stone, so to speak. You can decide what you want to do. I think referencing that it needs to be made up of non, four non-pass holders and three pass holders, it, it's sort of unnecessary, I would say. And I, I'd recommend that you can at least consider that aspect of it. And I was also very concerned in, in the conduct piece, where it says the golf committee will have no influence over the director of golf, the golf superintendent, or any employee, and no member of the committee will direct or request any action of any golf course employee. First of all, we know the director of golf works for the town and reports directly to our town manager. And, and that relationship is appropriate, we respect it, we know it, and we have never felt otherwise. And I would just say, if there have been situations where a member of this committee, either now or in the past, has ever done that, it would be helpful to know that. I'm not aware of it, and I'm not naive, things may have happened, but I think that we would like to suggest that it's a somewhat retributive comment and aspect. I'm sure that the selectmen who drafted this and worked with others to draft it had no intention to be that way, but I'd just say the interpretation of it is, and as a member, I'd just like to raise that point. And if that could be changed in the course of the discussions, I think it would be constructive. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Steve Volata, 13 Pine Wood Lane. Again, I, I thank the select board for giving us this opportunity to discuss this issue. And just a couple of quick notes. I truly do believe that we are meant to be the conduit to, the public, and, and things with golf. And, and when you talk about things like solely on the information provided, the end of the last line in the, in the conduct, we had a phenomenal opportunity, one in which I know, at, at least I'm significantly influenced on what's going on at the golf course. We had 388 people that filled out the satisfaction survey this year. 388, and the vast majority are, are Howard's town residents. And for whatever it's worth, they gave glowing, glowing scores. But when you look at the two scores, the two lowest scores, one was the sand traps, which is a project that we'd like very much to talk about at the golf committee and try to figure out how we could plan for that. The other was availability of tee times. You can't do that without talking about membership levels, and both of those obviously have a financial impact. So, as, the only way we can provide any sensible and reasonable advice to you, the select board, on those two issues, the only two that were below three in that survey, is to understand the finance. We know there'll be a financial impact in almost any approach that we take to try to address either of those two ways to enhance the golf course. So, it, it, we just can't come to you with a reasonable set of recommendations without understanding the financials, the, the financials. Also, too, as part of the conduit to the public, not only did 388 people fill out the satisfaction survey, many, many people supplied comments to go along with it. We were given by the director of golf, the overview of the results, which showed all the, which showed the numbers. We didn't get to see any of the comments. If we're meant to be a conduit for the public, to look at what's going on at the golf course, look to see how we can make it better and, and enhance it more, which again, is a really high bar, because the scores are really high, and anyone you ever talked to that knows golf says it's one of the best, if not the best, municipal golf course in all the Cape, and extremely well-run by, by the management team there. But we need to be able to see that information if we're getting comments. We know, we absolutely know and understand if any of those comments are of the ilk to try to, to try to make an opinion on the performance of employees of the town, that's entirely out of our purview, and we just simply ignore it. But if we have an opportunity to hear from 300, over 300 of our residents on the things that they think could potentially make it an even better golf course, and an even better experience for the townspeople of Howard, we need to see that information in order to be able to, to do our jobs properly. And so, I, I just encourage that, that we look at wording where, when we, when there's information that can materially, materially affect our ability to look at different options, or enhancements, and betterments, to improve what's already an extremely valuable and well-run golf course, we need to get that information, and we need to get it in a timely fashion so that we can do what we're... that information, and we need to get it in a timely fashion so that we can do what we're basically chartered to do, which is look for opportunities, particularly down the road, to make the golf course an even better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to the selectmen. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Michelle Ryan, Howard resident. So I wasn't going to say anything because I think it's already been said, but then I think it loses the weight of our committee because I think how this landed on each one of us individually, not that we've discussed it, but what I'm hearing in this room tonight is it's remarkably similar, how it's landed on us. We came to the meeting in August. We were charged with going away and developing a charge, and there was a process described. And as our Chair mentioned, the process wasn't followed by our liaison, and that's concerning because we went into this with good faith, that we would work together. And we have spent hours writing a charter that we then reviewed, the Charter Review Committee, that we were then told, "Don't worry about the charter. Write a charge." So we did again, as we were told to do by the Select Board, and then that went into the abyss. And when I look at the version that was posted online, I see about four sentences that look like what we submitted. But how this version and our version came together is totally unclear, and I don't think that's fair or appropriate or professional to us. So that whole process to me is disturbing and feels like it was not good faith. I feel like the charge itself as written, it almost feels like it's trying to solve a problem, and maybe it's what Michael was referring to, that there's been problems between the Golf Department and the committee. But I thought those problems were addressed. I know when I was interviewed to join the committee, I was told that. That's behind us. We're adding new members to the committee. We're going to move on. And yet, this Select Board continues to reference it. This group of seven individuals has not tried to keep that alive. We've tried to move on, and yet, when I read the Conduct section of this charge, 80% of it are things we can't do. I've never seen, in my career, a document that's supposed to say what to do where it's in the negative. Tell us what to do, then it's clear. That's what we do, and we don't do things outside of it. This committee has not said, "We've produced a new charter and a new charge." We never said that we wanted to have influence over the Director of Golf. We said we wanted to work collaboratively with the Director of Golf in both documents. And we put words where we said, "The Director of Golf needs to work collaboratively with us," because how can we function if the head of the Golf Department is not working collaboratively? It's just common sense stuff. We will not direct them. I don't think we've ever tried to. Again, in the nine months that we've been a committee together, you can't look back at what happened three years ago and write a charge that's punitive. It doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to me. And I feel the way this is worded, and even with some of the changes, Jeff, that you mentioned earlier, I still feel that the charge as written is restrictive and will probably lead to us continuing to be ineffective because the information that we have requested this year, we've continually been told, "No, you can't have that. Can we get this financial information? Can we get other pieces of information?" And those requests have gone to the Director of Golf as well as to our liaison. So if we're not going to get information, there's absolutely no way that we can make recommendations on any of the things that are listed in the scope. And so either there's a clarity around the collaborative nature of the relationship going in both directions between the Chair of our committee and the Director of Golf, and that information that is pertinent to the maintenance and operation of the golf course will be provided in time prior to our meetings so that we can be prepared this isn't going to work. And so I appreciate the changes that you commented to, but I still don't think they're This is very concerning. The wording in this, it doesn't feel like it's a working together. It feels adversarial to me, and that's a really bad place to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may. I'd ask just that, if you agree with what was said before, we just don't need to repeat, if you don't mind.
Carol Fuller, 3 Ashley's Way. And I do agree with everything that was said. I do have a couple of points, and one of them does go to the Golf Committee member composition piece in which Jeff inserted, "Shall be compromise of the four non-pass holders and three pass holders." And the most important part, I think, here is he gives a reason to ensure a diverse representation of our town's demographics. So should that mean there should be four women and three men because there are more women in town than there are men? Does it mean that five should be under the age of 65 and two over the age of 65 because that's the demographics in the town? So I think, forgive me, but I guess this wasn't exactly aimed at a diverse representation of the town demographics. So there seemed to be another, perhaps, reason that that might have been inserted, and I would recommend that you consider taking that out. Overall, I know you don't want me to reiterate that this is punitive, but it sure feels it. I think this template is very complicated, fraught with little landmines. And you might want to, I would like to ask you to revisit the one that we wrote, perhaps with your revisions, but it is pretty simple. It is pretty straightforward. We tried to listen to the Charter Revision Committee's recommendations and templates they sent us. We took that very seriously. We tried to eliminate anything that was confusing because that was our problem in the first I feel what is presented before you right now is very confusing, and I think we will end up in the very exact same place we were before, but with more restrictions. And it doesn't feel as though we can really do the job that you want us to do, to really advise you. We are not wanting to be in any way in conflict, but yet supportive of the Director and the Superintendent. And Mary, your first opening comments at the last meeting just really blew me away because I can't even imagine that, let's just take the Superintendent, that he could ever feel that we have not supported him ever, ever once, to Martha's point, never in our minutes. And I'm going to say this publicly. I received a phone call from Jeff, and the first question he asked me is, "Did you ask that Roman be fired?" I was stunned, and I said, "No." And I said, "Where did you hear that?" He said, "Oh, I heard that from a couple of sources." That wasn't true. Are there offenses that someone could have that should end up in something that should be fired? Maybe. But I did not say that, and I thought it was a little bit inappropriate for our liaison to ask me that question. So I'm a little sensitive to some of the verbiage, but yet, I, like the other six of us, are here because we are trying our very best to do the very best for all of you. We would like to know what your goals are. That would be helpful information if they're financial goals. We know you want it to continue to be the best. The survey, any survey in any business is a survey not to tell you what necessarily, you already know you're doing well. The survey is there to see where there are areas that you can improve, and that's, that was what we, our takeaway was in reading the survey. We never got to have that meeting because every meeting has been canceled all summer long. We do not even know what is happening on the course today. We don't know if, what plans there are. We know there are plans out there. We have no idea. Do you? We would certainly share those if we knew. So I would just, again, ask you if you would reconsider revisiting our original proposal to you, both on charter as well as charge. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Lots of comments. First of all, Martha, thank you for your passion. Thank you for the amount of time. Clearly, by everything that you read and took time to write, you're very, very passionate about this. And thank all of you for speaking to the gentleman at the end. I would agree, we could remove the Conduct section. Steve? Got it right tonight. You brought up sand traps. Has Roman or Sean asked the committee or the town to talk about sand traps? Has that been, has that been brought up by the two employees that we pay to run the golf course?
They have.
Okay. And you got no information whatsoever?
Well, we have projected that they work on, I hope, a couple at a time because it's a financial thing.
Who had projected that?
Roman.
Roman projected to you that you should work on a couple of things at a time and then gave you no information.
Couple of traps.
Couple of traps.
Working on them traps. Because, and in his capital plan that he shared with us, he's got that five-plus years out because he said he was told if it wasn't in the plan, like, for the next five years, he couldn't include it. And so he has it in a plan, I think, for 2029 to do a major revamp, and he's got an estimate of a million and a half dollars at the end of the day.
Thank you. So where I'm going with this is, and I'm gonna tread lightly because there's two employees involved that are not here. You are an advisory golf committee.
Could I just respectfully ask that we refer to them as the employees or their positions?
Absolutely.
For everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
So we have two employees, the town administrator, the two employees work for the town administrator, and then we have lots of committees. And one of you used the example of the Waterways Committee, the harbor. And when we built the harbor, the harbor master came up with what he wanted. He then went to the committee and asked them to do X amount of homework, which he brought back, and that was, the homework was public meetings. In speaking with the Waterways Committee, because that's one of mine, the only thing that they're doing right now really is working on appeals before they come before the Board of Selectment. They're very hands-off and very not involved. The employees need to feel comfortable that they are running the golf course, and this is not punitive on this board. Two years ago, as Chair, there was an awful lot of conversation and an awful lot of meetings related to two past members of the committee that both ended up resigning before it got to be to the full Board. But prior to that, there was hours and hours and hours of conversation with either the interview committee or selectman liaison at that time. To sit and say that there haven't been any problems and that there aren't any problems and that there isn't a sense of committees running directors is false because there is. There is the sense that we're trying, that committees are trying to get more involved. And I would ask each one of you, how many of you are on an association inside of Cranberry Valley Golf Course? How many are on a different association or group inside of Cranberry Valley Golf Course?
The women's golf league.
Oh, the league.
Leagues.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how is it not a conflict of interest for you to be working on pass holder information and rates and fees when it would directly impact your leagues? And that's one of my notes tonight to ask you that because, to Jeff's point on composition, I also did some homework and talked to other golf committees across the Cape and looked at other golf courses, not just taking one Select Board's opinion. And it is, and your version of diverse may be different from my version of diverse, but there's an awful lot of people that are on committees for golf courses across the Cape that interact with the public that don't play golf. And I don't know how it would be that every member of the committee is on a league or an association inside a Cranberry Valley Golf Course and setting fees and making rules and how that wouldn't trigger something with the Board or shouldn't trigger something with the Board where we should have some people that aren't members.
Not every single one of us is associated with an internal group at Cranberry Valley. I'm not on any group.
Just make sure when you speak, you introduce yourself again in front of a microphone so that the camera can get you, because there's lots of people watching this, I'm sure. Or we'll go back and watch it based on the Chronicle and their write-up. I think, again, I can get rid of the Conduct thing. I have no problem with that. I thought Jeff's revisions were good. And if you look at the charge, we're really asking you to do things when the Golf Director asks you to do. And that's how the Waterways Committee works. So when Jeff put in here, recommendations, so if you look at scope and procedure, which some of you took exception to scope and procedure, recommendations may include but are not limited to. He didn't say near and long-term capital plans is on the table right now for you to be able to gather whatever information you want as a committee. He's saying that it may include. The direction has to come from the Director of Golf or the Superintendent of Golf, and they have to be in charge, and they have to tell the committee, and that's what I'm gonna support. They tell the committee what they want and when they want it. And as far as the composition of it goes, it makes perfect sense to me, and it's how we use and do other committees. And because the door was open for the Waterways Committee, and I have watched the Golf Committee meetings, and I have reviewed the minutes, and I have been apprised over the last two years by the interview committee or Dawn about everything that's been going on. And I think that the liaison may not have taken enough out of what you wrote, but I think that there's enough substance in there, and if we just follow the process and if the Board votes this charge tonight, our next difficult decision is which four of you go. Because we ultimately are gonna need to have a committee with not all members of Cranberry Valley Golf Course on it. And with all due respect, I don't know anything about golf. I certainly could sit on a golf committee, though, and take direction from the Director of Golf or the Ground Superintendent and come up with a suggestion based on public input on any item that comes before you. It certainly may not be whether or not we change tee boxes or what the sand traps look like. It may not be that expertise, but I certainly could take public input, certainly could take input from the two professionals that we pay to run that golf course and come up with a reasonable decision. So I don't see how... So I don't see how having seven members of the golf course all on the committee and nobody else, I don't see how that makes any sense at all. And again, I thank you all for what you've done. But we have a golf director and a, and a ground superintendent that have been, over the last two to three years, thrown in the middle of a lot of stuff and a lot of questions being asked that go outside of the scope of what they have asked the committee or the board of selectmen have asked the committee to do. Goals, it was just mentioned, or asked, what are our goals? Our goals are to let our superintendent of golf and our ground superintendent to do their job. The goals come from the town administrator. And as far as the comment that was made about setting agendas, working collaboratively with the director of golf and the chair to set the agenda, it's no different than what we do. The chair, select board member Anderson, gets input from board members via email individually on topics that they would like on it. Mary then meets on Tuesday mornings with the town administrator and they set the agenda. And then it comes to a public meeting and we, and we debate it. So I'm sorry if you think this is punitive. I see it as cleaning it, cleaning it up because there's so many different things that have been thrown on the table. And as far as the charter goes, it's not your job to write the charter.
We were asked to.
We were asked to write.
I'm just, I'm just saying. It's, it's the charter review. They never got, but they never came back before us. We, they're an advisory board to us. Okay.
That's not our, this is, again, like, you're asking us to do stuff, we do it. Now you're saying we didn't ask you to.
My apologies for that being asked of you. But the charge falls on the board of selectmen. Whether or not we review the section in the charter, it's gonna be up for, up to us to ask the advisory charter bylaw review to review that section or work collaboratively with them to change that. So I support the document with the conduct being taken out with Jeff's revisions.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your input. I think we all have to keep in mind here that this charge is not written for you seven and for the director of golf and for the superintendent. It is written for whomever sits in the seats of this committee and in the director of golf chair and in the superintendent chair. So I apologize if it came across as punitive. I'm, I'm here to listen to deliberation in real time. I'm one of five. I think we just have to keep in mind that if you all sat here right now as interviewees for a golf committee and the interview committee said, "Just keep in mind, the golf committee will post meeting notices, maintain in post-meeting minutes as required under open meeting law. The golf committee will have no influence over the director of golf, so forth and so on," I don't believe it would feel punitive at that point. I feel it would, I feel it would be more direction-based. Just giving you your bumpers, your guardrails. Maybe I'm wrong. That's how I would take it. So again, it's not written for you seven. It's not written for the director of golf in the current position or the superintendent in the current position. It's written to go forward several years from now, many years from now. That's all, that's all I wanted to add to that. And if you wanna take out conduct, we can certainly have that discussion.
Just while we're on the subject of con, uh, conduct, and, and I'm, I'm okay with the idea of taking that out. But I think the real intention, maybe it's the word influence. I think it was really meant to be that the golf committee had no supervisory capacity over the employees. Certainly, you're gonna have some influence by virtue of conversations. So I think maybe, maybe that was the wrong word. Don, Julie?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Neither of you had your hand up, so duke it out.
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. Michael, it's factually wrong. The waterways committee actually writes the harbor management plan. So, and this would be analogous to saying that you want most people on that to not be boat owners and have no idea about boating. Because that's exactly what it said. I, I expressed this concern also to Jeff. I personally think if we wanna do this as a policy to the interview committee, that, you know, we'd rather have this balance. We have a tough enough time populating places as it is. To put it, this is set in stone. There's a, there are two numbers, four and three. I'm just curious, what part of the charter we're quoting where we can just dump off several members? You know, right now. I could see them aging out or something, but I don't see how you do that because it's not misfeasance, it's not malfeasance, it's not nonfeasance. And they have not abandoned their posts for four meetings. So, and I will say that, having been the prior liaison, they've gone a long way. The problems revolved an awful lot around the fact that, that there were subcommittees of certain people that went to Roman's office. That nonsense had to stop. And we had that discussion. The only mechanism for them to ask any information is, you know, a real meeting with an agenda item so that they don't wind up abusing that privilege. If one of the employees doesn't wanna answer something, there is a mechanism in this to be able to ask for that information, you know, through us. I get that. But the last sticking point for me still is the composition because I don't see how we get from here to there within the confines of our own charter. And I don't mean the, the part that says golf. I mean the part that talks about appointments in general. They haven't done anything wrong. And to dismiss them, as Michael was suggesting, I don't see the mechanism. I don't see how you get from here to there.
May I answer to that? Oh, sorry.
Yes, you may. Oh.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead if that's still on topic here.
The intention, in my mind, was not to immediately dismiss. The intention is to clarify what was brought to me as a conflict of interest. And not having the other, having anybody from the other 11,000 people in Harwich who don't golf on a committee that will be discussing financials, rates and fees, so forth and so on, and how that could be a conflict of interest. Now, I'm, as I said, and I'll continue to say, I'm here to deliberate this. I'm not, this is a draft. I'm not, I, I wanna say it one more time. It's a draft. It's something for us to do exactly this with respect and in real time. So I'm open to your suggestion. I'm open to your suggestion. I think as a board, we can, we can, for the love of God, send me away and have me do this for another week and come back. I do wanna mention, though, that it is not a requirement of the board to get any input from anybody. We didn't have to go to the director of golf. We didn't have to go to the superintendent of golf. We didn't have to go to the golf committee for any input, suggestions, or anything. I could've written a draft. I could've submitted it to the four, to the rest of the board. And we could've voted on it without any input. And the board as a whole, including myself, all five, didn't want that. We wanted input. You made a quick reference to recommendations may include but are not limited to near and long-term cap. That came directly from their, from their draft. That wasn't me. None of this is me. Most of this is others weighing in on what they thought were, was, was important and how this could be streamlined. So again, I'm taking notes on my draft.
Julie, Julie and then Dawn. It is her turn.
Well, if he, if you wanna comment on Jeff, because mine is sort of broader approach.
Yeah, that's, I did. I just wanna put this to bed as a line of conversation. Conflict of interest, it would be if they were gaining some benefit that was not passed through to others throughout the town. Whatever they're voting on, they benefit from no more and no less than what everybody else does. And the state ethics course is quite clear on that. So I really, if we don't want people, because we'd like a broader panorama of people that are gonna be deliberating, that's another story. But please, let's not talk about conflicts of interest because no one was gaining any direct benefit that nobody else got. I would disagree, but okay.
So on, on that note, some of my questions go back to, and a suggestion. And I appreciate, I know you've done a lot of work on this. I know you have all done a lot of work on this. And I can't emphasize enough, that collaboration is, is real. It's important. It's important for your committee, this board and employees overall, as well as the town administrator. What I'm wondering is, while we're trying to also create a template moving forward for other committees, you know, maybe what we do in this template is create a section and maybe it's at the end, maybe it's at the beginning, but that we specifically note that no committee is directing any, any employees of the town, that they are working independently for the town and they are instructed by administration. Because then that applies to every committee and it's not addressing anything punitively, et cetera. So that should be part of our template. And then, going back to this draft, I will say I'm a little bit confused because I thought that this draft did incorporate, and it sounds like you took some of theirs, but I just didn't see the separate document. And maybe you shared it and it's buried in here. So that's my fault. But I thought that this was a collective meeting that took place. I will admit that I did think that. So that's unfortunate because I can understand that that didn't happen. And we did say that. So moving forward, I agree. What's happened is in the past, we're trying to clean things up. And to the other board members' points, oh, those were real things. And so this board is trying to make sure we clean it up and we address it appropriately. I would say that, to me, when I saw the four versus, you know, the four members that were non-golfers, I was a little puzzled by that because to the points made earlier, I think that certainly non-golfers can bring something to the table. But I, being a non-golfer, if I'm instructed to go look at how to improve sand traps and stuff, that, that's a new experience for me. And I would probably spend most of my time there. So anyway, I'm just saying.
It's always the roughs.
Yeah, you know, I don't even know. But I'm, I'm just saying. What I don't know, I know what I don't know. And it's quite a bit. So anyway, I would say that I can understand having maybe two non-golfers on your committee. I think having the majority of non-golfers doesn't really make sense to me. Now, now that I've heard this input and thinking that this was a draft that was, you know, collaboratively done and that everybody was happy with it or maybe had tweaks, I would agree that you can have non-golfers on there, but I, I would think that they shouldn't be the majority. And as to Dawn's point about a conflict of interest, I mean, that means that, you know, bikeways could make suggestions on the bike path that, you know, other people who don't ride bikes don't like. You know, so I just think that we need to look at it a little more broadly. I think that we can make a template that incorporates some of these specifics that we're putting in here, that we can put at the end, you know, or at the beginning, whatever way we, we feel comfortable that that message is sent. The only, the other question I had that somebody mentioned was that, and I agree to the comments with the survey and being able to get the, the written comments. To me, that's not, I don't really understand. And maybe there was a reason it wasn't shared. I have no idea. But if there was any reason that there was no privacy issue that those, that information could be shared, I wouldn't have a problem with any committee who conducts a survey at the town administration level, as long as that's shared appropriately, that there's no privacy or any other issue. I, I agree. You need to hear the comments and whether good or bad, where do you need to improve? If everything's a rave review, then you can walk away saying you're doing a great job. But there's always room for improvement.
Joe?
It's up to the chair.
I'd like to keep going on this. And I would just like to ask our town administrator if he'd like to weigh in on any of the above.
Yes, please, and thank you. So as I've heard the conversation, I always go back to our governing document, the charter. And I, I think I've been clearing up channels of communication over the last few years as the charter relates to the various functions, the staff and committees and all that. So, and when I've been asked in the past, my response has been that the appointed agencies that are, are recognized under chapter seven exist because and to support the select board. I'm focused on chapter four, which is town administrator, but chapter five, which is town administration. You folks may recall that at your very first working group session, and the chair was very gracious in opening, opening up the topics, the very first thing I wanted you folks to talk about was chapter five as it relates to chapter seven. Because, and I don't think there's any party here this evening represented that bears any burden of this issue or the, what I consider to be a potential defect in the charter. But it's under every committee description. And I'll talk in a moment about what I view committee, excuse me, charge versus charter because I think it's important. But in every instance where there is a town agency appointed by the board, there's a reference to staff. And the reference to staff, to me, is not clear, but it's not a problem. The reference gets to along the lines that any applicable staff work for the town administrator in administering the policies and guidance or something to that effect. Now, to me, that's abundantly clear. It's so clear that if we remove that reference, the references would still be there under chapter five. Employees work through the town administrator. Town administrator works through the select board. When we talk about a charge, and the board already knows this, I'm a parliamentary geek, if you will, charter to me is sacrosanct and important. It's the end-all, be-all. It is the governing document. I don't see the word "charge" appearing anywhere in that section. So my understanding of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules of Order, if you will, is that when a, a body is created, a public body, an agency, if we use our words, then the appointing authority may install a charge. Absent that charge, I have relied upon, and I think just about every instance of any committee referenced under chap, uh, chapter seven for that opening line that says along the lines that X committee is appointed by and reports to the select board. And so to me, it makes it abundantly clear. Committees, select board. Staff, administrator. And so I think we're getting there. And I appreciate, I, I wanna identify our community center director in a different role, if I could, because when you approached this evening, I believe that was as the union representative of the two employees. And I'd leave it to that group and to those folks, say, if there were problems. But if there are problems, it cannot bleed into the committee role. And so for me, and I think I can appreciate the confusion whereby you're working on a charge, a charter-related committee says work on the charter. Is that a charge? No, I think it's a description, but I can understand the confusion completely. So to try to summarize, what's in the charter, what I understand in the charter is the first part of the charge. This committee, however, whatever it is, and it's consistent, is appointed by the select board and is essentially advisory to the select board. Now, there are immediate differences wherein they were regulatory and that's completely different. So we do know that in that chapter, there are two classes of committee. Advisory, which by my examination is the vast majority, or regulatory. Because the other thing that's not there is that is not an articulation of all of the committees that exist. Nor would I argue that it should have every committee in the charter. But when it's absent, it's understood. The board appoints those committees. So as we continue on, I'm always gonna be hyper-focused on my responsibilities, chapters four and five. Five is it relates to employees. And make sure that there's an arms-length difference between committees and staff. So that's always my take on it. I, I think we're getting there. But that is where I'm always gonna come from.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. If, very briefly, because it's 7:30 and it has to be new material. It cannot be a repeat.
It's just in response to Julie.
Quick.
Again, I had asked about us getting to see the, the comments from the survey. I have absolutely no problem and would support wholeheartedly that those comments get reviewed first by the director of golf and/or the town administrator. So if there's any issues whatsoever about an employee's performance or anything, that gets redacted or that comment simply doesn't get supplied to the committee. It's none of our business. It's none of our business. I agree wholeheartedly with the town administrator. The superintendent and the director of golf work for the town administrator. We do not need to hear any feedback from individuals on an employee's performance. That's up to the manager to take care of.
Thank you. Karen?
Karen.
I'm sorry, Karen.
That's okay.
I know your name.
I just have one technical question and it's, Joe. So how we started, we did a charge, then we were asked to write, excuse me, the charter and then we were asked to write a charge. And we start off with, I think, what you would be expecting in that charge. So I don't know if you have seen that, Joe, or not.
I don't believe I've seen.
No.
Your committee has produced now.
Okay.
I think what I would like to propose at this moment, since, you know, Jeff made some, as we were talking, changes, which, you know, you tried to scribble and look at your notes. What I'd like to suggest is we put this on hold for probably another couple of weeks because next week's meeting is 100% wastewater and have Jeff take in everything we've heard here tonight, in addition, getting your changes, so that we can all physically look at it and have that conversation. Any other board members have other thoughts?
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Michael?
Just for the record, I wasn't saying that we were going to fire all them tonight. I said, "What if?" That was my question. It was a question. It was, if we adopt this charge, what are we going to do? I never said we were going to.
Thank you for that clarity. Yes. Noreen, yes.
Noreen Donahue Headwaters, speaking on my own behalf, not representing any committee or board. I know it's late, but some of the statements made in terms of composition, I feel are a real sea change for this town and really alarming. Because it's late, I'll just get the thought out there. What I'm hearing is the issues of diversity on one hand and expertise and passion on the other. Frankly, you know, I watch or attend a great many different committee meetings and I don't want people off the street without expertise to be there to tell me what to do. I probably would know more than them. It sounds like you're getting a group of people to like take a survey of, you know, what do you think of a sand trap or what do you think of this? Hey, ask me a couple about finance, you know? How am I going to deal with somebody who has absolutely no financial background, you know, and try to run a committee? So, I mean, I could probably go on on this for about an hour or possibly on any topic for about an hour.
We are well aware of that, Noreen.
But I really think this is a big, big, big mistake, you know? I mean, I don't know why you would want people without backgrounds. You know, recently, I just filled out for you guys the citizens' activity form, might as well throw that out the window because all it asks about is what made you come to this committee? What's your background that can help for this committee? What's your expertise? What's your education related into this committee? So I really don't know what you're doing, to tell you the truth, but as much respect as I have for this committee and for your committee, I think you're doing it too fast because this, I think, is a big topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen.
Thank you.
Linda, yes. I know I can count on you to be concise.
Maybe I'll surprise you tonight. One thing, the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, Linda Sebula and I am the chair of the Bylaw Charter Review Committee, we are reviewing the charter as we are doing, we are hope to be doing it with the select board. However, the Bylaw Charter Review Committee is looking at various sections of the charter. We are not doing it in a vacuum. Therefore, the charges that are in the section that has the...
Bring that stuff here, bring back over there.
Someone needs to mute themselves on TV over there. Sorry, Linda.
Well, maybe they are going to be more intelligent than me.
I doubt it.
But, so we're not, where was I? Oh, yes, we're not doing this in a vacuum. So therefore, we are reviewing the various committees and the way to review a committee is we are going to each committee and saying, what do you think your charge? Do you think there's something that needs to be changed? We are taking that under advisement and then we will issue our findings and suggestions to the select board, but you can't work in a vacuum. So that is why they were asked, what's your charge? What do you think about it? And whether or not there should be any suggestions? So that's why that's happening. And we're doing that with all committees. We're asking the committees to give us some information as to where they think in the charter, things should be maybe rewritten, maybe changed. We're going to take that under advisement and give you a list of suggestions and recommendations. I do have one question on this happy document that you put together. I've been in this town for 25 years. I've never heard the phrase "passholder." I've always heard somebody's a member of the golf course. They're a non-resident member of the golf course. Is passholder what we're going to call them now or should this say, you know, however you compose this committee, isn't it members? Passholders, I've never heard. So it's a new term.
Jeff, can you answer that for Linda?
I believe I can. I didn't name the passholders, passholders. I will ask, Joe, if you could give us a synopsis on the difference.
Well, I'm not sure I need a major dissertation here, but it's just they're all called, they've always been called members.
He asked a question, so I think Joe...
I only have 17 paragraphs on that topic.
Please make it two.
My understanding is according to the director of golf, a passholder is somebody that has purchased access to the course for the entire year.
So a member?
No. And the difference between a passholder and a member is as you've heard these folks say tonight and some other folks in the room, they may be members of a golf association. So a passholder is somebody that has purchased access to the golf course for the full season. There is resident and non-resident passholders. But members go to members of the men's and women's golf associations. And the direct, this director of golf has consistently used passholder during his tenure.
Okay. I can tell you for 25 years, I've never heard him or anybody other employee of the golf course, including all the select board and various people in town call it a passholder. So...
Let's keep one conversation, please.
So I was just curious about that, but clearly, we all think better. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to say, we're going to bring this back for another discussion unless anyone objects of the, my brothers and sisters here. Okay.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
Are we still on hold for any meetings? I would say yes.
I would say yes, because we're still under review. I think that's safest. Thank you.
That's fine.
Last point. How about if I schedule a meeting with you all next week and we get on the same page? Okay? I'm not your adversary. We definitely want to work together with you all, see what we can put forward and create a better document.
A working session? Or do we...
I'll be in touch. I'll be in touch. I'm sure it'll be a public meeting. I'll be in touch. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Public meetings. Working groups are public sessions.
Please hold your conversation.
Sorry, the committee needs to adjourn. You have to adjourn, Martha.
You need to adjourn, Martha.
You need to adjourn.
Oh, I need to adjourn.
My second.
Now, please hold your conversation until you leave because the microphones pick everything up, okay? And we will move on to, I think we're going to skip review of committees because we don't have anything else to talk about for committees and we're going to move...
100,000.
Call me later. So we're going to move to item C, Barbara Bjornson, Clifton Larson Allen LLP, on the operational analysis. Please, please leave before you continue speaking.
So, Madam Chair, if I can add some overriding noise then?
Yes.
So as you've indicated, we have Barbara Bjornson. As board members may recall, Barbara through Clifton Larson Allen or CLA, LLP, is the consulting firm that I brought in after the board was contemplating the memorandum from the DPW director about fee schedules and things of that nature. We were able to get Barbara to come in and this was during a period when we were between finance directors. And so the task given directly to Barbara was, please review and provide an operational analysis of the disposal area, AKA transfer station, and that's what she's done. Kathleen Barrett, our finance director, is joining her. I think Kathleen has additional financial information, but I'm thrilled to have Barbara join us in person, although I am mortally embarrassed. I told you it would be quick and I apologize, Barbara, but theoretically, we're only an hour and 40 minutes in. With that, Madam Chair, it's my pleasure to turn it over to Barbara Bjornson to present her operational analysis audit, which is in your packet.
Great. Thank you both very much. And I am sorry it took this late.
It was fascinating.
Well, you can come every week. You never know what we're going to do.
She might pass on that.
So I guess I would start by asking if everyone feels pretty familiar with the materials. I'm not sure how much of the background or process you want me to go through. If you could give me a little guidance on that.
I thought this was super clear.
Yeah.
Very, very clear. And for me, so for you all, it's probably super clear.
I mean, I obviously have questions, but I'm with Jeff.
Was that genuine?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Good reading.
I think we'll have questions as we go through it, but I'm with Jeff. I thought it was very readable, Don.
I'd like to have him write a report on the way to get done with the golf committee.
Yeah, no, I thought it was great.
Michael? You're good. Okay. So go ahead. Assume we've read it and have some level of understanding. How's that?
Great. So I guess I would start out by sort of summarizing my process, which was to familiarize myself with the transfer station. So I'm a user in my own town, but was not, you know, it wasn't obvious to me what happened sort of behind the scenes. And so I spent some time in the Scale House, spent a lot of time...
Can I just pull the microphone a little towards you? Sometimes on TV, they can't hear.
A little better?
Probably better.
Spent time with Link and with Kim and spent a lot of time back in the finance department sort of tracing through activity. So that's all captured in the document that you saw. I think there were a couple of sort of significant takeaways from what I saw. Number one is that the MUNIS system or town financial reporting system doesn't lend itself to how people outside of that arena think about financial activity. So think about a P and L, think about revenue and expense and what the bottom line looks like. So I attempted to convey that if the transfer station, I forget what the word is, but if they were a standalone operation within a town, enterprise fund, that's what it is, what that might look like. And the numbers reflected here are before all the final numbers were captured through June, but there was a surplus generated both from the commercial disposal and also from MSW, which are the biggest components of the transfer station. So there were a couple of P and L's attached, profit and loss statements attached as exhibit. So I think unless somebody has specific questions on process, we could talk about observations.
How much, I just had one. How much time did you spend at the transfer station? How much of this was actual reviewing what happens as opposed to people saying what happens?
The majority of it was reviewing. It was interviewing staff at the transfer station. It was reviewing what happened with information once it came to the finance department, the turnover sheets and the documentation that supported activity. I did review with Link and with Kim my impressions and, you know, what I learned to make sure that I hadn't misunderstood something. And there were probably some sort of nuanced suggestions that came from that part of the process, but I think my interviews and my observations of what happened gave me the vast, you know, the vast majority of my information.
Anyone else have questions on that part? Go ahead.
So the observations opportunities, there are, so my background is an auditor, but this specifically was not an audit because there were very prescribed steps that you have to take if you're performing an audit. But one of things that is sort of critical to auditors and accountants is the notion of separation of duties. So having two different people do something that is a check and balance on each of them. So you'll see that in some of the observations, that's an element of it. So let me go through these briefly and then if we want to talk more specifically or if you have specific questions, we can do that. So there is a turnover sheet each day, which captures the financial results of that day. And the turnover sheet is brought to the treasurer's office the next business day. That, anytime you have cash and, you know, sort of supporting documentation, it's sort of critical to have someone look at that and verify that the steps that went into preparing it were done in a, you know, sort of rigorous and correct manner. So my first observation was to consider having a second person review and approve that. Just from a process standpoint, it would be as simple as looking at it, initiating the turnover sheet and then everyone knows that that took place. In the reporting that comes out of Waste Works, which is the system used at the transfer station, there are voided transactions. And so a transaction happens and it's, you know, eliminated, basically. This is also something that should be reviewed just for the volume and the reasoning behind that. You know, people make mistakes, but if there's, you know, continuously a high volume of voided transactions, that should give pause to someone. So somebody should be looking at that. Invoices to account holders are sent out by the Scale House attendant, payments are received. Again, this is sort of a mixture of, you know, maybe you don't send out all of them for some reason or there's some flaw in the process. So it's just to have that separation of duties, to have someone else look at what is being sent out. The transfer station, there's a chart in here that describes the number of days that Harwich is open each year versus some of the surrounding towns. Harwich is open 362 days a year, which is significantly more than at least a couple of the other towns. And it does have a financial impact. I believe, my understanding is that staffing is determined according to schedules, but when someone's out, someone else has to step in and it may result in overtime. And so that could have a financial impact. Harwich also serves surrounding towns, which is a little unique on the Cape. So both commercial haulers and residents from towns outside Harwich can access the transfer station. So there is a financial impact on that as well. The Waste Works system is a previous version and there is a current version that's more powerful. It's at an additional cost and, you know, someone should consider whether the benefits of that incremental cost are worth it for the town. Recycling costs have increased steadily and that's something I didn't look at specifically, but someone ought to consider whether residents pay for that, pay for the recycling and cover those costs. So that category of observations is operational. I then have another category about accounting, but before I do that, is there any questions or does anyone want to talk about any of those pieces in a little more detail?
Julie?
So I just had one question because I noticed how you said, update the Waste Works to the SQL server version that was going to be... That was going to be 4,900 plus the 200 per month, which is roughly like a total of $7,300. And then you noted about consider automating an interface between Waste Works and Munis. How, is, do you know, will one talk to the other if we upgrade automatically, or is that an additional cost?
So, I don't know the specific answer to that, but often, the interface between a system and the general ledger is through an upload. And so, there's a template that you create in the system that's set up a certain way, and it will come into the general ledger. So, I don't know specifically from Waste Works whether that's an element of the upgrade.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's really all I have.
Okay. So, accounting, there are a number of commercial accounts that are behind in paying the town of Harwich. I think Kathleen may have covered that in a previous meeting or talked about that. And so, this may involve a policy change, but it's certainly something that should be managed, however the town feels that is appropriate. Currently, accounts receivable is recorded at year end, but it's something that, you know, the finance director should be getting a monthly report on, and that would come right from the scale house director right out of Waste Works. The transactions for the commercial users of the transfer station are captured separately, or, sorry, are, are sort of bundled in the general ledger system. It took me a significant amount of time to kind of parse it all out, to understand what was what, what's MSW, what's C and D, what's residential. And for purpose of analysis, it would be really easy to capture that separately right at the beginning, when the data comes into the general ledger. Budgeting similarly is done at a consolidated high level, and having the drivers of the budget, you know, tons that are coming in and tons that are going out, which is by far the largest component of the budget, would be a really helpful way to be able to look at what we expect to happen versus what actually happened at the transfer station. So, that's, those are the observations in accounting. Any questions, comments on that?
I do have one, Mary.
Sure.
The outstanding invoices, which I know we covered in the past, do we charge interest on the outstanding balances? Can, can we charge interest on these outstanding balances until they're paid?
We currently do not. I do not know if we're, if we have the means to do so.
Okay.
I don't have enough information about how the process as a whole works, the billing process. It may be a legal issue where you put a disclaimer or additional information on a bill, you know, your outstanding balance will be charged at X percentage. That's something we have to research.
Okay. Thank you.
Julie?
I have a question on Exhibit A, so is that the right time to ask now, or should I hold off until?
It's fine with me.
Sure.
So, I'm just trying to understand where we have purchase services, almost two lines above the total expenses at the bottom.
Mm-hmm.
And just for comparison's sake, it, it shows, you know, FY '20, it was 1,066,7429. But now, current year, FY '23, it's 2,405,330. And I'm just trying to understand that jump and what that means.
So, I can start by saying that purchase services, the majority of the expense in there, is the cost of bringing and disposing of C and D and MSW.
Okay.
And there is another couple hundred thousand of recycling and a bunch of other things. I did not look into FY '20 expenses. I don't know if you want to pose that question to Link, if he has knowledge of that, if Link is still here.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Hi, Link.
Good to see you, Barbara. Link Hooper, DPW director. We signed new contracts back in 2000. Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry, 2020. The golf meeting was long. That was pretty close. Yeah, but we're, our, our costs, our MSW nearly doubled.
Yeah.
And C and D's been going up steadily.
And, and Link, while you're there, just, I'll, I'll ask you, but under other DPW only, we go from 52,237 to 164,093 in FY '23. What, what is that?
I don't know what numbers you're referring to.
Oh, you don't?
I, I have it over there. I just don't know.
It just says others, DPW only, 53,237 in FY '20, and then 164,093 in FY '23. I just want to understand it.
Julie, what?
Almost the bottom of the page.
Other DPW.
Right above total expenses.
I didn't put assemble this report.
I would have it on my laptop. I can get back to you.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you.
While, while we're on that page, the one that caught my eye is on the revenue side for current year. The first line, disposal area stickers. This year is like half of the previous year.
So, the, so the way that this was set up, so you'll see that there's 3 million in, in actuals, but the projection is 3.7. So, it's spread across all those categories, but the main sort of money to come, I didn't have through June when I did this, so money to come was primarily in the sticker area and also in the C and D area, where there were outstanding balances that were going to be paid. But you know what those numbers are?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself before. Kathleen Barrett, Finance Director. So, to be fair, we were so far behind in the finance department that a lot of the transactions weren't recorded until months later. So, the actual revenue for stickers specifically was 871,449. That's the actual for the year.
Okay.
And for the year as a total was 3,705,650. So, it's very, very close to the current projection. It's only under by 15,000.
Great. Thanks, Kathleen.
And, and to be fair, the sticker revenue budget was 950,000. So, the sticker revenue is 78,000 below the actual, what was forecasted. So, whereas the commercial fees were slightly above, as were the disposal regular fees.
Which means it's gone down 100 from 21 to 22, and then another 75 the next year. That's odd.
Is it COVID?
Hmm? I don't know.
Maybe COVID made that in?
Just odd.
Yeah, to be fair, like, I mean, 21 is kind of, if you take that out, because it's kind of an outlier.
Okay.
20 and 22 and 23 are very close.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And the rate's been the same.
The rate's been the same.
Yeah.
So, it's just a matter of stickers. Some people get, you know, service, some people buy stickers. And it couldn't, could be timing issues. Some people could wait till the following year, and so, the revenue is recorded in the next fiscal year. So, there can be some timing issues if someone just waits and, you know, I don't know, like, boards piles.
Okay.
So, so the timing can, can be a factor in that. If you take 21 out of the equation, it's a fairly steady.
Right. Right.
So, the last section there is financial results.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt, before you move on, because you were just covering accounting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. You had said at the outset about Munis not being conducive, or something along those lines. Do you believe Munis could cover the change in how we would do accounting, so it's not bundled together?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's not that Munis is a disconnect?
No, correct.
It's that it's not coded in a way that would have been helpful, but we can do it going forward?
So, it's, every general ledger system relies on accounts, and so, you define the accounts according to how you want your information to come out. And so, redefining those accounts across the levels of granularity that you want to see them is a process that Kathleen is fully supportive of.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and in my research and everything that I worked on here, that was the biggest limitation.
Sure.
Was the information was so consolidated, it's difficult to differentiate what's associated with what. So, we are going to work on that this year, and that will be something that we'll do going forward. It'll be more helpful for everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Go ahead, Barbara.
So, financial results, first observation, a lot of transfer stations accept EFTs, electronic funds transfer, credit cards, whatever it is. There is a cost associated with that, which maybe should be borne by the people that actually use the credit cards or take advantage of that efficiency. I did already mention the budgeting process, doing that by sort of key drivers. The, so, I, I believe you've talked about this, but, but one of the elements of, of looking, I, I think it's a reporting to the board issue, is that notion of the full profit and loss statement, that the, the fact that expenses are higher and revenues are higher is not visible in how departments typically report. You have a budget, your spending is more than that, you ask for a transfer, and that's the visibility of operations versus, yes, our expenses are higher, but also our revenues, revenue is higher, and that's going, that's free cash going into the general fund. So, I think there's a piece of the information flow that is really pretty critical to, to convey as part of an analysis like this. There are, I think, opportunities from what I've seen other towns doing to increase costs of disposal. I thought there was another section on, so not, not just the one-off, but also the cost per tonne of disposals, that anything, any increase in rates is obviously going to offset any increases in expenses going forward. I don't know what the interest of this group is in increasing rates for anyone, but that's obviously a decision or a discussion you would need to have, and a decision you would need to make. The last section is just that there is some further analysis that could be done that probably would provide some insights, which was not part of what I did. It would probably be interesting to see what kind of volatility there is in the traffic, particularly commercial traffic. You know, are there times of the day that are, are busier, times of the week, times of the year? And how kind of consistent is it across time periods, across years?
Barbara, is that information already tracked by any system? By the, I know we've got that license plate system, so is that already tracked?
So, Waste Works does track all of that on a daily basis.
Okay. And you're just suggesting that some analysis of that?
Yeah, to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
There's also, I, I don't believe this is an issue, but again, from internal controls, from that perspective, I think it's important to, to look at the cash received versus tickets printed. At the transfer station, it says, everybody needs to get a receipt. And my understanding from talking with people is that that happens, but that's something that someone should be paying attention to, to just make sure that that is a practice. Everyone that comes in there gets a receipt, and it's recorded. Waste Works has a, a set of rights for different users, and I, I would suggest that somebody look at that as well, that not everyone should have the same rights to amend things or to, you know, to input things. That's again, an integral process that is worth looking at. There aren't a lot of people that are acting as scale house attendants, so I, I don't think this is a big issue, but it's something to think about. And then the last was considering the interface between Waste Works and Munis, which we talked about a few minutes ago. And then after that are the P and L's. So, I think unless there are specific questions on that, I think that summarizes the results of what I did.
Anyone?
Everyone's just.
We love trash.
So, the thing that jumped out at me was, and I'm not saying I'm for or against, I'm just trying to gather information. If we're open 100 more days almost, then, or 70-something more days, I can't remember what it was, over Orleans and some other towns, I'd, I'd like to see what that actually would translate into savings. I'm not, again, I'm not saying that that's what we should be doing, because I'm sure our residents count on the fact that we're open as much as we are. But maybe it's something we should take a look at before we raise fees. Maybe we could have a discussion about cutting out some days of being open. I'm sure there's way more to it than just what I'm, what I'm asking, but I'm, I'd like to make sure we're doing our due diligence in, in controlling our expenses before we begin tacking on more fees to the, the residents of Harwich. That would be my, my only.
I think what we just talked about a couple of minutes ago, tracking usage.
Yeah.
Which Waste Works provides, I think would be really insightful. You would see the residents come, you know, certain days of the week, or certain times of the day, or, you know, weekends versus weekdays, and the same with commercial traffic. Is, is it a steady stream, or is it, you know, is it bumpy? And does that give, you know, give rise to some sort of an insight of, let's close on Wednesdays, or let's do something different?
I, I agree with that. I think that would be a really, I'm, I'm data-driven anyway. I like, I like to see the data and the numbers, so that would be, I'd, I'd be in support of taking a look at that information sooner rather than later. Yeah.
And, and there's nothing we have to do, that data is already in there?
Yes.
It's captured?
Yes.
I mean, obviously, we have to pull reports and analyze them, but the data's there.
How long would that take to get that, if I may? How long would that take to get data like that? And I don't want to put you guys in a crunch to get it, but, I mean, is that something we could maybe get in a month or two months to?
I, I would think so. I, anytime I needed data, I would ask, I'm sorry, Erin?
Erin and Cam are like, yep.
Yes. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I remembered that correctly. I would ask Erin for a report out of Waste Works, and as, as soon as she could get it to me, she did. So, again, I wouldn't want to put her in a spot of not doing something else, but, yeah.
Could we request that?
Yeah. Michael?
So, first question is on the Exhibit B, when it's under C and D disposal outbound, far right, wind waste, charge per tonne, 713 and 225. What is that?
Where are you?
Exhibit B.
Page eight.
Thank you.
So, they charge $113 per tonne, but then they added on surcharges. Is that this year, Link?
Yes.
Yeah.
What did, what did the surcharges total then? Or was it surcharge on every ton?
That's per tonne. Yeah.
On every tonne.
938 per tonne.
So, our actual disposal cost is 124, 125?
Yeah. Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. In August, it was, which is the most reasonable full month, it was 470 a tonne fuel surcharge and 225 tonne environmental rate. So, the fee total is, is added on to the 113.
With 713 and the 225, the numbers you just gave me.
Well, it's 113 a tonne is like just the basic fee.
Yeah, that I get.
And, and that's what's in the contract.
Yep.
There is a, there's a provision that they can charge additional fees. There's no definition ceiling or floor calculation, but, so they can charge, they can change the fees as they would like. So, the most recent was, that I had done at the time, was 470 a tonne for the fuel, and then 225 environmental. And the environmental may be like, what's, you know, federal or state type of thing.
Great contract for them. This, this, but this report says 713, and you're saying $4.25. What is it?
So, mine was off of an invoice.
Yeah, it, it changes.
Okay.
They change it. So, I was just saying, so the most recent was the 470 plus 225. So, it's, it was like 695 a tonne in August.
Yeah.
It could have gone up. So, it's, it's around $7.
Okay.
It depends, I think.
I would just say, great information in here, lots to digest. A lot of the suggestions and things like the credit cards, that's a policy decision. And now, you can do credit cards that if you pay with cash, takes a 4% discount off, not, not 3%. Now, the biggest program is 4% off if you're paying cash. I don't understand why we don't do that, but again, that's a length of discussion and a town administrative discussion. The, to what Mary and Jeff were just getting at, it'd be great if we knew when all the trucks were coming, commercial and residential. That number doesn't mean a whole lot to me, because people adjust their dump schedule based on when dumps are. based on when dumps are open. I've done a fair amount of research on other towns and, and kind of learned what they do and why. What we really need is cost of operation. If we're open five days a week instead of seven days a week, how many less trailers do I need? Do we need any less employees? That number for me is a lot more important as to the habits of the commercial trucks going to the dump, 'cause some of that's dictated by the DPW director on when they can come in and when they can't. It's really the cost savings, insurance, fuel, everything else that goes along with the dumping open seven days a week. That's the decision we have to make, and that's the data that we need.
That, that, and the other one you've talked about, Michael, is do we want to be in the business of taking stuff from other towns, or do we want to go back to being just Harwich?
Again, and, and thank you for that. That's another policy decision, but it, it is, strikes me now, given the change in the climate, that we're still inviting trash from Wellfleet to, to Yarmouth. And Harwich, if you talk to the disposal people, which I have, they love Harwich. And it's great for all of the other towns, and maybe we should talk about intermunicipal agreements where the other towns pay us to take all of their stuff to, to increase the revenue for the dump. But, policy discussion, and I, I think a future discussion, unfortunately, if, if the ask is in here tonight to raise resident dump stickers again, I got a lot more comments on that than Link probably wants to hear.
Yeah, that wasn't part of it.
I know there's a recommendation in there, that's where I was going with that, because there is a recommendation in the packet on dump.
That's old though. It's funny, though.
It's in the packet.
Yeah. Joe?
So if I could explain that part of it?
Yes.
Barbara's report goes to page number nine. The ninth page talks about inserting as Exhibit C, so that's the director's memo, but that was the, as I prefer to it, the precipitating document. It was that document that you received that we discussed, that led me to contract with CLA and to bring Barbara in to do the analysis, or to begin the analysis really, of a lot of, as you've said it, Member McCaskill, policy discussions that the board should have, and I for one am grateful for the timing of it, because we may be able to time it for, in concert with the budget and anything else, so, you know, tie it all together. But I believe to the point, there's no discussion this evening on the rate schedule, and the document that's in there is not what we're talking about per se, rather, it caused me to bring Barbara in. I hope that made sense, I think I'm killing brain cells, I was like, oh.
Yes, it did. Don?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. And to what Michael was saying in combination with what Jeff was saying, with the variables, if you're gonna be talking about changes in time that we're open, one thing isn't gonna change, we don't do paper throw. So the, I'm presuming the aggregate tonnage of what people throw away is gonna be identical if it's five days versus seven days, because people just aren't being charged on the basis of what they're throwing away, they're being charged on the basis of, for a year, we charge you this. It is variable, though, the construction waste, and then how much labor we devote to that. So it would be an interesting discussion to have overall, but there is an interrelationship between that income and whether it supports or takes away from the profit part of the operation, which is another interesting conversation. It was like, deleting that does what? I mean, it, it would obviously delete some labor, but if it deletes income, where does that fall on the bottom line? No answers for tonight.
No, I know, no answers. We've, we've got a lot of data here, but I think, I for one would like to see that data broken out by the categories, as you've suggested, before we make any more moves, and even though Michael's right, that people come different times 'cause we're open, I still think it would be interesting to see by day and time when people come. I don't know what that might show us, but if it's in there, I'd just as soon see it. Can we, maybe this is a question for Link, and then I will get to you, Noreen. Can we have, what was her name?
Erin.
Erin? Could we have Erin pull reports for, I don't know, last fiscal year of those type of numbers?
Madam Chair, absolutely. You know, Barbara's asked us for a bunch of data, it went on for a long time, and we were as cooperative and as, and did it as, as fast as we could. Turnaround, we would continue to do that. Overall, I thought there was some good suggestions, every mousetrap, you know, could be improved, and I, I thought, so you brought some stuff to my attention that, you know, I, I hadn't really considered. So there's some, some good ideas in there. Just really briefly, I know it's not for tonight, and I know it's very late, to Selectman Howell's comment, he's right. We, one thing we do very differently than most other communities is we do all our own trucking internally. So you shut the gate, we still have approximately the same amount, we've got to have staff moving, 'cause most of where we go is only open Monday through Friday, unless you're proposing to close a weekend, which this last weekend wasn't that great. All right, thank, thank you.
How, how long would it take to get those reports? Could that be something we could have, like, in a couple of weeks, a month?
Oh, absolutely, ma'am.
Okay.
Absolutely. I just need, Barbara needs to define what she's actually looking for, and we will work on getting it out of the, out of the box, so to speak.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Noreen?
I don't want to overlap with what select board members have said, and I don't have the report with me, but I did look through it. It was hard for me to see, and maybe I missed it, but how, you know, specifically what labor, what dollars of labor were associated with the C and D versus the normal operation. So I'm just adding on to whoever, great suggestion it was about a cost of operations, if you went to a different number of days, but rather than just pulling out the numbers that are related to C and D in the report, if we could have a more definitive thing on what would it look like financially without C and D or with Harwich only, however you did that stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did we get that, what Noreen said as an action item? If we could? Is that a?
I, I think she was talking about the same reports, we're talking about having Link produce.
No.
No?
No, financial and, and labor directed on categories, really, it's, you know, C and D and waste, but the operation, where the labor goes, where the labor goes.
But isn't that, isn't that what we'll get from?
No.
No? Okay, then we need, then we need both.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt, the, excuse me, the, all the costs that are recorded in MUNIS are consolidated. It's very difficult to parse them out without doing it manually.
Until they start getting reported separately.
Yeah, you would have to change the way everything's done with them.
So, in Exhibit C or B, so we have C and D revenue and MSW revenue, and because the data is consolidated, this was a, a way of estimating the, the, the cost of C and D versus MSW. So, total number of tons, how many people drive the truck to dispose of it, how many hours does it take, what's their rate? So it was an attempt to do exactly what, what was just discussed. I don't know if we could get more granular than that, because people don't do time sheets. I mean, it's, it's at this level that I think the information is available. Does that, does that make sense to you?
I think so, 'cause the same people do the same, do both.
Right. So maybe some days it takes less hours, I forget, I forget how many hours I said, and maybe the driver isn't, $30 an hour, maybe one's $28. I mean, they're, definitely, it could be more precise, I'm not sure what that would get you, but this was an attempt to, to lay that out.
Okay. Kathleen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just that I'm very grateful for Barbara, she did a fantastic job, and it was, she's really helped put a lot of things together, and very grateful for all the work and effort she put into, and kind of filling in before I arrived, so, and kind of, you know, she did great research and, and, you know, like, camped out there to know how it works. You know, 'cause it's, there's only so much that we can work on, you know, in my department, so this, this is really helpful, and it's, and it's helped us to learn that, that, you know, MUNIS is a really powerful tool, we just have to use a little bit better, and that will help in our budgeting process going forward as well.
Great. Anybody else? Joe?
If I can just add a value statement based on what Kathleen just said, that is one of the many things that Kathleen brings to the table. She's a MUNIS person, so I think we're well positioned where she could, well, meaning you use it, I don't.
No.
She understands it, so I think we're well positioned to try to get to where we want to in the future for, for better parsing of data, if I can say it that way. But I do want to thank both of them, I want to thank Link, Kim Barubi, everybody over at DPW for providing the data, and I, and I would say that for my purposes, for what Barbara's provided, I couldn't be happier with her work, and for what CLA LLP has provided town, and this is just a step forward. I think we have considerable information for the board to consider policy decisions, and as we also evaluate numbers going forward. So I appreciate everybody's input.
Great. Thank you both very much. Michael?
Again, just great job, lots, lots to digest, and look forward to future conversations. I'll send you my thoughts via email. Before I forget, the DPW transfer station are due, congratulations, hey, job well done. There are some points, and as you said, some mousetraps we can work on, but all in all, Link, your, your crew over there is awesome, and you guys do a great job. It's never, never a bad experience on the dump, so this is not, this is, this is very helpful, and I think for good future conversations, but the numbers speak for themselves, and you guys have done a great job.
Thank you both very much, appreciate.
Thank you all.
Next is an update from me on the, the trust, and I think the most exciting news to everyone will be Laura Schufelt, if that's how I say her name, is working on the RFP for the Marceline property, and is going to be presenting a draft to us on September 25th, which is just two weeks, so we're pretty psyched about that. Jen Golson is continuing to work on the action plan, this is the action plan for the trust. We've, we've seen a couple of rounds of the draft, and she hopes to have it finalized by October. So one of the questions for the board is, do you want to see that presented at a joint meeting here? Do you want to see that action plan? Or one other thought we had is it could be a, a special meeting in the evening, maybe more of the public would want to come, and I don't know how much interest people have in an action plan. I mean, I think what you want the trust to do is start building stuff, I don't know if you'll want to read, so that's, just, I'm throwing that out for discussion.
Yes.
Yes. You want to see it?
I think we should have a public meeting on this in a different venue than just the housing trust, and I think a lot of members of the public are waiting for us to do something, and this is an opportunity to show that we are actually doing something.
Okay. I will take that back to the trust. Did I get a nod over here, too? Okay, we will work on that.
Absolutely.
And, that, that's it.
Move that we vote to waive the town's rider first refusal for the sale of 48 Blue Heron Landing and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Four, zero, one's missing.
Missing, so.
Not missing, missing.
On a mission.
You want to continue with C, Madam Chair?
Sure, you want to.
I move to vote to appoint the, a select board member to the Cape Cod Metropolitan Planning Organization.
With a nomination?
I, I think before you do that, what it says is, nomination shall come from select board members acting individually, no nomination should come from the select board as a whole. So that means someone of you has to want to nominate yourself. Does anybody know anything about this organization?
Wasn't it Julie when she left?
It's Julie, Julie's it.
Hold on, hold on. You got a second?
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yeah, do you?
Yeah, I, I think the reference that you're looking at in the last paragraph on that page is that when that CCMPO goes through its process, your representative is working individually, they would not be coming back to the board for guidance or direction. It's that you're naming someone to be that person, and they're fully authorized and charged to act individually on behalf of the town.
I think Julie would be amazing at that.
I'd do too.
Boy, I'm, I'm glad you can translate that, that is not clear.
So it would be that the board would name somebody, and then that somebody acts individually.
Somebody must have an undying desire to do this.
Julie?
Is this new?
I think I nominated Julie, and I got a second. So I really think we're at the discussion stage.
What's that?
The answer is it's not new, MPOs have been around for like, more than 20 years.
So who has been doing this?
Yeah, who's doing it? I renominate them.
Larry's not here.
Yeah, let's bring Larry back.
Still have nominations.
I could turn it and say I nominate Michael as well, I mean.
I think we have to vote on you first.
But there wasn't a second.
Yes, it was.
Who, who seconded?
Jeff.
Michael seconded.
Yeah, yeah, Michael through Jeff.
Can we ponder this one more week?
Yeah, let's ponder this.
Now that we know what the responsibility is.
I move that we table this one week.
And hope it goes away, right?
I hope it doesn't pop back.
Your deadline is in the middle of October.
Middle of October.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I started reading further, and it's not as clear as I wanted it to be.
Okay.
I move that we table this one week.
All right, and Joe and I will look at that tomorrow.
Right.
And in the meantime, Julie, you should do it some serious thing.
She couldn't, because there's so much vacation time involved.
Yeah, I'm on vacation next year.
Is D going to be any more popular? This one does exist. Larry was our member at the Harwich-Chatham intermunicipal agreement board, and we need someone new now that Larry is no longer a selectman.
I'd nominate Jeff Handler.
Why did he get nominated?
I would accept that nomination if seconded.
Oh.
I second it.
All right. Any discussion?
I, I would just say that I've been on it before. Chair, you were involved in an awful lot. Julie's only on vacation, and Don's on the water collaborative.
The clean waters.
Clean water, so, this is a, this is a, something Jeff will kind of have to reactivate, 'cause they have not been meeting, he'll have to educate himself on it, but I think Jeff would do a great job.
Okay, and he's willing?
Thank you, Michael. I am willing.
Excellent, thank you. All in favor?
How long does this go for?
Seventeen years.
Hold it.
What, what?
I just wanted to interject one thing. Michael knows I've been on this subject. When you do this, we're supposed to align with their own regulations right now, and one of the biggest points of contention we have, just so you know going forward, is that they made a decision in Chatham based on their own infrastructure and their desire to protect it, that when you hooked up, you had to have an engineer do it. We were talking about the cost savings to the individual homeowners by using sanitarians to do that. They basically insisted through the, in the past that, no, no, it has to align with our agreements. I don't see any financial exposure at all to Chatham if our people hook into our pipe and something goes wrong, because it's going to be our responsibility to fix it, not theirs. So that, that's a major topic that I would love you to bring up.
Thank you, Don.
Joe?
It doesn't, or shouldn't impact upon the vote, I don't know if you've voted yet, I don't know if Mr. Handler's in.
He's in.
We were very close, and then Don had some...
So I can, I can wait, 'cause it's not material to the vote, but I have some background on what the group is, when we've met, and when we expect to meet again.
Why don't you go ahead, 'cause we... Why don't you go ahead because we want Michael for the vote.
Very good. So the document that intermunicipal agreement between Harwich and Charter, Chatham identifies that there is the town administrator or the town manager in Chatham's case. We have our water, wastewater superintendent. Chatham has relied upon the Director of Natural Resources, Dr. Bob Dunkinson. That role is vacant, so they're going to have to add somebody, and then a member from the select boards of each town. And so it's not that we haven't been meeting, it's that the last time we met, the parties did not come to agreement on certain things. But anytime there is to be discussion between the two towns relative to the intermunicipal agreement on Harwich's flow going to Chatham, that's where we step in.
Okay.
Ridding.
Okay.
My excitement is bubbling.
We can still take that.
We're voting on Jeff's nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Discussion on items related to 2024 Annual Town Meeting. I think that's you, for starters, Joe?
It is, and thank you. So to tie items E, F, 1, and 2 together, and it also ties back, believe it or not, to your earlier discussion about the operational analysis, we are 231 days away from the first night of our annual town meeting, and that is a thing that I will be going back to. So be so warned. And it's the reason why I have ended my summer attire. I was led to believe that if you ask for money, you should do in your best possible attire and as politely as you can, and that's exactly what we're doing with this process. So town meeting process now hereby begins. And what that means is Rich Larios, Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee, has assembled that committee, will be meeting, the committee and I, on Friday of this week. We'll be going, we'll just be reviewing the current capital plan, and that's, of course, Exhibit C and your warrant. We are merely adding one column, which is fiscal year '29, and that's the blanks. And that's what we're going to talk about going forward. And what you have in your packet, and for this item specifically, are some potential topics that may find their way into the warrant. But these are items that staff have identified or other folks that are potential warrant articles. So really, the intent tonight isn't to get into a deep discussion, but rather it's to identify some of the various items that may come back in the warrant. I'm already in the process of actually constructing the warrant for annual town meeting. And then we'll talk about the financial assessment and next steps on that. But Capital Outlay Committee is meeting this week. I'm having an all-hands department head meeting next week where we're going to dive deeper into the budget process, so it's not just going to be capital outlay, it's going to be community preservation. So Caleb, can you change? We might want to just have the speaker that's speaking. The blooper reel is separate for $299.99, and that'll be for sale at the gift shop. And so really...
Yes, okay. This is, this is serious business.
Yes. And yes, the serious business will begin in earnest, and really, this was sort of me just ringing the bell that we're going to talk more about it, and I can certainly go into detail on any of the topics that are left on the agenda.
Okay. Any question? Any questions for Joe? That's great. We're off to a good start.
Thank you.
Now we're at contracts.
Okay.
Is Michael left for good?
What's that? I know.
I can speak to any of the contracts that you have? Excuse me.
Do you want a motion?
Do you want motions on them?
You want a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the contracts, they're required.
Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry. And for whose signatures when you're making a motion?
I move that we approve a contract with Solitude Lake Management for the alum treatment of skin acquit pond in the amount of $89,028.
That we will sign.
That we will sign as a select board.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I could very quickly.
Yes.
Sorry. I just want to emphasize that this came out of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. It's Article 34, so very timely and a great project thus far that Amy Usoski, Heinz Propp when he was here, John Yunusy and others are working on with the residents there and in the best interest of the town. So we're excited to reach this point so quickly after town meeting.
And Amy sent us an email this afternoon, apologizing that she couldn't be here, but fully in support of this contract.
As is the Conservation Commission. I think they actually had a vote on that.
Great.
So that would just require the vote.
So we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Which number?
A, contracts A.
Contracts A. Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you.
I move that we approve a contract amendment for Atlanta Construction and Management Incorporated for Owners Project Management Services at Brooks Academy Museum in the amount of $36,826.40.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe?
Thank you.
And C?
I move that we approve a purchase and sale agreement with Eastwood Companies Business Trust for the disposition of land at 276 Queen Anne Road in the amount of $1,505,001. No sense.
Second. Hallelujah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Madam Chair, if I... No, I apologize. I think this is worthy of discussion, and I do think that your prior chair and several others, this was a phenomenal result that we weren't really sure what would happen. The dollar is absolutely essential because if there had been anything close to it, the dollar won the deal. But I think the board needs to be congratulated for taking this action, bringing it to town meeting, and having that amount of money come back for land that has been surplus for several years. And again, this ties back to our last town meeting, so we're really being able to get these things done. But congratulations, I think, are to the board on this one, especially Member McCaskill.
I was going to say, especially Michael, because he really pushed us on this.
And if I could, I would say that not just the board, there was a group of residents that took up the No Pet Cemetery.
Oh, right.
And they did a great job, and they crushed it at town meeting, and that this really was a result of that defeat. And Tom Birch is due a lot of recognition. He's the one with the flamingos on Queen Anne Road, but he did lead quite a charge, and his suggestion was to sell it. And with that said, I would like to see the board take up sooner rather than later something good we can do for the residents with this money and what we legally can do with this money rather than just put it into the general fund. But it'd be nice to, on this, either clear more titles and get more of our owners unknown back or do something for the taxpayers, not just spend the money. That's it.
Did you want to comment on that? Because wasn't there some question about what we can do with that money?
Yeah, just that we, the funds, it's my understanding, would not be going back to the general fund because it's sale of land. We are working, Kathleen and I, with finance and council to identify if there is anywhere where it must go, but it wouldn't be general fund, and we'll make sure we keep in touch on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do need to vote because I didn't vote.
Well, we unvoted you.
We unvoted? So we need to vote. We had a motion, we had a second. We need to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you.
Town administrators' report.
So two quick items, if I may. First, pleased to announce the appointment of Lauren Swift. Lauren will be joining us as an executive assistant in the Council on Aging Department. Her scheduled start date was effective today, so it's great to have that role filled. And secondly, speaking of parliament procedure, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege. I have not yet had a chance to connect with my mother, and I bring that up because today's your 89th birthday, and I wanted to use the opportunity to put that on the records of the town. So happy birthday, Ma. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Select board members' reports. Don?
I was safely ensconced in my basement most of the weekend.
Thank you for sharing that.
That's all I have to share.
Just glad we dodged the bullet, and thank you to all the town workers who did a great job with the cleanup.
Okay. Jeff?
Hi, nothing, Madam Chair.
Michael?
Just the 9/11 ceremony at the police and fire station was great. Deputy chief, the chief, fire chief was at a fire in Wellfleet, so Deputy Chief did a great job, and our police chief, David Gilmet, did a great job.
I heard that the chief was quite good. Oh, Cindy?
Sorry, no, this is my part where I get to, but I did want to just remind everyone, unless any of you didn't get the email earlier today, we got an email from you Drummond. Mr. Gunderson's funeral is this Friday at 11:00 at Holy Trinity, for anyone that's interested out in the public.
Thank you. I have nothing, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero.